I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We need to add Communication Number 12 from the Civil Service Board to our agenda.
Second. Motion, the second, is to add Communication Number 12 from the Civil Service Board to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Uh, the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A under the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number One receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Two receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for 2015 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
If I could, I'd like to ask the Auditor, Randy, to walk me through the account number, how that is obtained, what each section means, and also, this amount is from a grant that the city has received, if that's correct.
Mr. President.
Mr. Bartels.
Uh, yes, Ms. Adams, that's correct. This is from a grant that actually was put into the state budget, uh, in the last, last biennium's budget, I believe, uh, and will be used for the stadium park grant over by Lima Stadium. Uh, the account number that you speak of is something that gets created in the Auditor's office, and it has several components to it. The, the first four digits of that account number signify the fund, and in this case, it's a Capital Projects Fund, and you can tell that by the beginning number, which is number five. The second group of numbers is the department number, and in this case, I, by my choice, I've elected to assign this to the Engineering Department. And then the last group of, uh, numbers is what's called the object number, and that helps further define what the purpose of the expenditure or the, the money is for. In this case, it's going to be for park improvements.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to pay the Ohio EPA annual discharge fee.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Four and to authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Is this the Howard? I think this is for Howard. Is we read? EPA, who have an EPA? This one, I just want to ask the question, do we give this out once a year, or?
It would be Mr. Sheely.
Sheely.
Mr. Sheely.
Oh, Ms. Sheely back there. Ms. Sheely, is this once a year, or this increase every year, or different years, it just goes and gone? But this is something we had to pay every year to them? Okay. But it is always at fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, or it might go up a little bit.
It can't go up based upon your population or service and stuff like that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Sheely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to pay the Ohio EPA annual license to operate fee.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Five and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Six.
Five. Oh, five, I'm sorry. From Chief Martin regarding legislation to dispose of city property through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with St. Mark's United Methodist Church for a cop substation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Auditor regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Spirition.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Again, I would like, uh, to ask the Auditor, Randy Bartel. Um, we spoke earlier this morning, based on his reports that he gives us once a month on contract services, um, for this year of 2015, he's, he had asked for this position 1,000 hours at twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents an hour, and I was asking how much for 2016 in the hours and the rate, and I believe he may have an answer for me this evening.
Mr. Bartels.
Mr. President. Uh, yes, the, the bill rate for 2016 will be twenty-nine fifty-five per hour, and I do not expect to exceed the thousand hours again this year, and we're actually going to be under that for 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Director of Human Resources requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Lamont Nelson and Associates.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
We need to authorize legislation.
Authorization.
Could you amend your motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion. Uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to move that Communication be, uh, Communication Number Nine be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Nine and to authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit to JIK Company DBA/DBS post cost, I'm not sure, 2412 table court.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed and that the clerk be authorized to file with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, of no objection.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Ten and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to amend Chapter 880 of the Codified Ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Twelve.
From the Civil Service Board recommending the creation of a GIS survey manager.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Twelve. Is there any legislation required, Mr. Geiger? Mr. Lowe, would you amend your motion, please?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to amend my motion, and, Mr. President, again, I would like to move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed and, uh, the Law Director to be authorized to create any legislation necessary.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Twelve and to authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is reports of officials, Chief Martin, regarding community outreach activities.
He's a litigator.
Mr. President, members of council. Uh, first of all, let me apologize, I've been hanging around, whoops. I've been hanging around Steve Cleaves entirely too much lately. I had to bring a chart with me. Unlike Steve, though, I've, uh, not learned to make a stay up for too long yet.
You haven't been to all of his presentations.
But, uh, actually, I am, uh, very appreciative of the opportunity I have to come to council and speak tonight regarding our community outreach strategy. Um, as all of council is aware, and in fact, actually, uh, with a great deal of support from City Council, uh, the Lima Police Department roughly about a year ago undertook the, um, project of really reinvigorating our community-oriented policing strategy. Uh, and that certainly involved the creation of the substations, which has, uh, was already covered just a little bit ago in the communications. Uh, we have the next agreement on the, uh, agenda tonight to authorize, uh, next piece of legislation to authorize the, uh, opening of the second substation. Uh, but there's a lot more that goes into community policing than just neighborhood substations and just having neighborhood officers out there in, in the high-crime neighborhoods. That's certainly a very important component of it, but, uh, with community policing philosophy, the, uh, all of the energies of the Lima Police Department needs to be placed into, really, three specific areas. Uh, that is relationship building, uh, problem-solving, and crime prevention. And we have a mission statement, as I'm sure each one of you knows, at the Lima Police Department that, uh, helps to direct us in all that we do, uh, to meet those three components of community policing. And our mission statement is, "The Lima Police Department is committed to excellence. It is our mission to work in partnership with the community to creatively solve problems as they relate to, related to crime, the fear of crime, and neighborhood decay, and to safeguard the constitutional rights of all." And each and every activity that we do needs to be measured up against that mission statement. One of the things is, we were having discussions over the last several months about how to reinvigorate or to better fulfill that mission statement and to better fulfill that philosophy of community policing, was, as we looked at what kind of new things we should be doing, we realized that we have a lot of things going on already that we weren't even really sure exactly how much activity we had going on at any given time. And so we realized that the first thing we had to do before we really talked about going forward was to get a good snapshot of what we were currently doing. And therein lies the reason that we have created this chart, uh, which I will also, since Major Kuhn is here, I will extend my appreciation and gratefulness to him because he and his immediate staff are the ones who have really worked hard on getting this all put together. But in looking at the chart, and each one of you has a smaller copy in front of you, but if you're like me, even with the glasses, the print is small enough that it's very difficult to read. So that's why I wanted to bring a chart large enough that everyone could really actually see it and I think appreciate it a little bit better in terms of the amount of activity that we have going on. Uh, as you can see, we have several dozens of activities and partnerships listed here that we are engaged in on a very regular basis. To qualify to make it onto this chart, it has to be something that we're, either a partnership that we're engaged with or an activity that we're engaged in at least one time a year. Uh, some of them occur only once a year. Uh, for instance, if you notice on there and see where we have the, uh, Cops and Kids Christmas event, which just took place for this year, this past Saturday. And I would like to mention on that, we actually had, I believe it was a total of twenty sworn members of our department, uh, and I believe six non-sworn or civilian members of our department, plus about another half dozen family members, spouses or parents of, of personnel within the police department, that all helped to, uh, make that event happen. Uh, and that does not include, then, the many other personnel that we had from law enforcement agencies throughout all of Allen County. I don't want to make it sound like the Lima Police Department was the only ones engaged in that, but, but again, that was a partnership with the Fraternal Police and various other, uh, law enforcement agencies throughout the county to, again, reach out to young people in need and to, even though, again, we were not really fulfilling the law enforcement role that we have, uh, we were certainly, uh, fulfilling the service end of protecting and serving, uh, with that. And so, you know, that's an event that happens only once a year, but you can also look on this chart and you'll see many activities, for instance, the badges for baseball. That happens multiple times each week throughout every school year, uh, in which we have officers that are engaged with young people in the schools, uh, with the help of the, uh, Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, as well as Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Allen County and the Lima City Schools. We're all partnered together, uh, to, again, be able to reach out to young people. Uh, something I should point out is if, as you may have already picked up on, uh, the two specific items I've already mentioned involve young people. Uh, and we do that with intention because we do believe that, um, if we put most of our efforts into reaching out to our young people, we will have a much greater long-term return on that investment. And I'm not talking return in terms of dollars, but I'm talking return in terms of improving the quality of life, uh, within our neighborhoods and within our community. So, uh, again, um, there is a lot of different activities and partnerships here I could talk about all night. I'm sure that you don't want me to do that, uh, so at this point in time, I will just ask if there's any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I have, I have two. If you could tell me where we stand, uh, to the far right, all the way to the bottom, can you tell me where we stand with the graffiti removal and who's doing that? Because I still get a lot of calls on that. And also, I see House of Worship.
Yes, that's House of Worship, uh, training or, or security, uh, surveys and training for Houses of Worship. Um, and, and the graffiti removal, I'll address in just a moment, but as far as where it says House of Worship, um, we actually provide security surveys and security training in three different categories: businesses, homes, and Houses of Worship, uh, because each of them, uh, actually are best if they approach their own specific needs from their, from, from the specific type of organization or, uh, entity that they are. Uh, as far as the graffiti removal, um, that is still actually being accomplished, the actual removal itself is being accomplished by LacNIP, uh, and that is part of the very valuable partnership that we have with them. Uh, but it is our crime prevention specialist that will take the initial report and make sure that referrals are made to LacNIP so that the removal work can be done.
So come to you, and then they go to Lac, then you go to LacNIP?
Yes. Yes, and because we also want to make sure we have it documented so that we can be looking for, uh, patterns, um, and, um, again, try to do some problem solving. If we're starting to see patterns where graffiti's showing up in specific areas, or if we've had in the past, uh, specific taggers, uh, that, that allows us, as we develop enough information on that, allows us to be able to be more proactive in trying to put a stop to it, not just removing it once it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
Um, Chief, I, I just want to tell you that I appreciate this information, and I'd like to see you guys brag a little bit more about yourself, to be honest with you, because you guys are putting a lot of work into, to working with the community, and I just don't think it gets out there enough. So I, I appreciate you being here tonight, and I appreciate all that you, you guys are doing, and, and, you know, I just wanted to make mention of that. And like I said, I, I think that you should brag about yourself a little bit more when you guys are doing this kind of thing, so, but I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and actually, I will say I had a meeting with, uh, someone from without, or from outside of the police department, uh, just the other day, that actually suggested the same thing, that we need to be doing more of that, and one of the suggestions was that we, uh, start having much more regular reports of officials, uh, through City Council, and so, um, our intention for next year is to actually, I, I hope we won't make pest of ourselves, but to, uh, make you see and hear from us a lot more frequently.
Mr. President, I have one thing to ask. And I was going to echo the same thing with Todd, saying, there's a lot of things you guys are doing that a lot of people does not know, and they won't know, most of them don't get out to the areas and stuff, but like Todd said, come up and say, you know, put some reports together, let us know, because I know, I see it, you know, what you guys are doing. You guys are working real hard, uh, change, trying to change the diagram, the diagram on different things that we're doing in our community, you know? It's a good thing, you know? You got more officers coming out, more officers talking and talking to kids. I mean, we are trying to move in that direction, and it's a good direction we're moving in, but, you know, you got plenty of work here to do, you know? But a lot of folks won't see this, got, they don't see it at City Council, they won't see it, you know? They'll wait to see something happen, then they'll bring it up, but these are some of the things, the tools you got to work with to make the city a better place to live. And I agree with, um, Mr. Gordon on that. You guys doing real good, you know? And you guys give yourself a hand, because you guys are moving toward, you're doing better than a lot of cities, you know, from the, the red, white, and blue group with the kids and stuff. We moving real quick on different things like that, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Now, I will try to see if I can get that move back out of the way without, uh, breaking anything. Oh, okay, well, Major Kuhn's going to make sure that I don't mess it up.
Next is the reports of Committee's Public Works Committee.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes, uh, the Public Works Committee, uh, met November 30th at 5:30. Uh, on the agenda were two issues. Uh, a new issue that would have been, um, put in committee by Counselor Tibbin, dead trees on private property.
Yeah.
And an ongoing discussion of design review. Uh, we took the, uh, dead trees on private property issue up first. Counselor Tibbin, uh, gave the reasons of why he felt this was a necessary tool for property maintenance, as nothing existed. The Law Department had prepared a draft, uh, a new section under Code 1806.18 entitled "Damaged Dead, Diseased, or Insect-Infested Tree Removal on Private Property Basically Notice to Remove." Copies were available to the committee and those in attendance. Uh, there were some good questions asked by Counselor McLean and also, uh, Amy Odom, the Director of Community Development. If an owner has an issue, one thing I'd like to point out of this, and it's in the minutes, is, uh, if an owner has an issue once receiving a notice, they have the appeal process, as all notices have that option. The committee had a motion made by Counselor Tibbin and, and seconded, uh, to pair, to prepare legislation adopting Section 1806.18 as written. It was seconded by Counselor Gordon and passed three to zero. The second portion of the meeting, um, I opened the discussion for, uh, design review topic, and we were reviewing the guidelines pertaining basically to a email that had listed ten items for discussion from, uh, the Law Direct, Assistant Law Director John Payne. Uh, that went into a lengthy discussion. It is to be continued at the next meeting, and, uh, the motion to adjourn by Counselor Gordon and seconded by Tibbin was at, uh, 6:45 PM, and I respectfully, as all, had received a copy, respectfully submit this, uh, this committee report to be received, filed, and approved.
Second. Motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Public Works Committee as given by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is Ordinance 25015.
Amending the 2015 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 25015 be amended in Section 1, the very last statement where it says "Transfer of Funds," that those words be changed to "Additional Appropriations."
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend Ordinance 25015, uh, in Section 1, the last sentence, strike the words "Transfer of Funds" and replace it with "Additional Appropriations." Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 25015 be passed on its first reading as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 25015 on its first reading as amended. Is there any discussion? Let the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 25015 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote as amended. Ordinance 25115.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 25115 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 25115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Uh, reading through this, uh, looking at the list, I had noticed there was no total, and I called Ms. Odom, and she provided me some information I'd like to share with The specified mowing for 2015, um, administrative fees and publication, the dollar amount for that for 2015 was one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Round one and two totaled eighteen thousand, one hundred fifty-four, one hundred dollars fifty-four cents. And rounds three through five totaled twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents, for a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? Let the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 251-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 252-15.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 252-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 252-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 250-215 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 253-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with St. Mark's United Methodist Church.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Ordinance 253-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 253-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Just some quick things to point out about this. This was our second installment for our cop station. This is on the north end of Lima. It's at St. Mark's Church. That borders in the First Ward and the Second Ward. So, this is Todd and my wards and we're appreciative of the help on our end. It's not that we have bad neighborhoods. We're just in a situation that I think with your help, that getting around, talking to the neighbors will make a difference in ours. So, I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 253-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 254-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to dispose of surplus property.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Ordinance 254-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 254-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 254-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 255-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Superior Personnel Services.
Mr. President. Mr. Lowe. I move that Ordinance number 255-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 255-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 255-15 will be placed on second reading with a five to three vote. Ordinance 256-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Perry ProTech.
Mr. President.
Ms. Miles.
I moved that Ordinance number 256-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 256-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 256-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 257-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Gray Matter Systems, G E Intelligent Platforms, Inc., for water and wastewater plant control.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 257-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 257-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 257-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 258-15.
Amending 142.01 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, governing adoption of standard codes.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 258-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 258-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 258-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 259-15.
Amending Section 1452.02 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, governing height above sidewalk.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 259-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 259-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 259-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 260-15.
Amending Chapter 880 of the municipal income tax of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tiven.
I move that Section 2 of Ordinance 260-15 be amended as follows. This ordinance and the amendments approved hereunder shall be effective January 1st, 2016. This ordinance and the corresponding changes to Ohio Revised Code 718 apply to municipal tax years beginning on or after January 1st, 2016. All provisions of this amended Chapter 880 apply to taxable years beginning 2016 and succeeding taxable years. This ordinance, 260-15, does not repeal the existing sections of Chapter 880 for any taxable year prior to 2016, but rather amends Chapter 880 effective January 1st, 2016. For municipal taxable years beginning before January 1st, 2016, the municipality shall continue to administer, audit, and enforce the income tax of the municipality under Ohio Revised Code 718, City Code Chapter 880, and the ordinances and resolutions of the municipality, all as they existed before January 1st, 2016, and that a clean copy be provided for the clerk's records.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend Ordinance 260-15, as Mr. Tiven stated. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Geiger.
If I may, given that that was probably the longest amendment in the history of City Council for an ordinance, a couple of things. This tax ordinance is required because of changes in the state of Ohio municipal income taxation laws that the state legislature felt it was appropriate to pass. And it has to be passed prior to January 1st, 2016. So, that's why we had to act on this sooner rather than later. The purpose of the amendment is to clarify that this ordinance does not repeal the existing tax ordinance of the city. Instead, it amends it and on a going-forward basis, what is passed tonight will apply for tax years 2016 and beyond. The one that's on the books currently will remain on the books and apply to tax years 2015 and before. So, we'll still have to keep the current one on the books roughly another six, seven, maybe eight years, depending upon how things work out. So, it's a little bit more complicated. It's not just the scribners changed, obviously. So, I wanted to explain that to counsel and appreciate your patience.
Are there any questions on the motion to amend? It looks like you were getting ready to say something.
Not a question about the motion as such. But I do want to comment that the state of Ohio, the legislature undertook a process this past couple of years where they, which they dubbed a simplification process. That was a false label. And I believe that what we will have as a result of exactly the construction that the Law Department is bringing to this, we will see how much this is going to cost us. This was, this ultimately is a move on the part of the state to further reduce the revenues of the cities. And I think that we'll want to actually look at a reporting mechanism where we can understand what these costs have been on an annualized basis going forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 260-15 be passed on its first reading as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 260-15 on its first reading as amended. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
As this goes through, it's not a raise of our taxes or anything like that and people in the audience may not know what this means. So, I would like to ask Steve Cleese if he would just give us a quick synopsis. I don't need a big one, but just explain this is not something that's going to be a tax increase to the individuals in the city of Lima.
Yes, Counselor McLean and other members of counsel. What this ordinance does, it makes clear that the state is beginning to set more rules for what local governments can do with their tax administration. Some of the changes in here, some of the, I would say, the more onerous changes have to do with the tax appeal procedures, reporting requirements around that. We currently have a tax appeal procedure of which I'm a member and Chris Fass as the tax head of that department are members, along with the mayor and the law director and the auditor. So, it's pretty much a in-house review procedure. The new procedure will be basically an outside group. There will be members on that group appointed by counsel and a member appointed by the mayor. And the reporting requirements of that group are quite thorough. So, that'll be something that'll be coming forward to counsel shortly is responsibility for appointing some members to that tax review group. We will lose some revenue for temporary workers in the city. There was a rule that if you worked within the city for a period of 20 days or less, you weren't taxed. But as soon as you went over 20 days, you were taxed. So, if you worked 21 days, you were taxed 21 days. Now, the rule is if you worked 21 days, you're taxed for one day. That'll have an impact on short-term contractors, say, for instance, people who work in the refinery or temporary technicians who go in the hospitals and such, who are generally very highly paid individuals. So, we will just have to see what kind of impact that will have. Actually, I'm more concerned with what's coming down the pike than this administrative change to the tax law to date. There's a proposal that has been made to the Ohio Legislature to exempt taxation by nonresidents of the city. There are a large number of nonresidents who work in the city, in the hospitals, for example. I certainly don't expect 100% exemption to pass. That would just cripple and destroy just about every city in the state. But I do expect to see a push to reduce from full taxation, nonresidents. And that's something that will be following and most certainly testifying against if it goes further in the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tiven.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 260-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 261-15.
Enacting Section 1806.18 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, concerning damaged, dead, diseased, or insect-infested tree removal on private property, notice to remove.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 261-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 261-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I've talked to the Assistant Law Director today and Mr. Payne and Counselor Tiven here. Although I will be supporting this, I have concerns about the residents who own property in the city here, concerned to the fact that, you know, so many individuals in the city are not able to comply with this. And if they don't comply with it, you know, there's like a $500 fee. And I really, I understand our concern about plight in this city. I understand our concern with setting a standard for homeowners as far as appearance. But when we apply these type of ordinances throughout the city here, and some people are just not able to comply with it here, we have snow removal, code enforcement, we have grass cutting, we have, you know, even you can't have a chair or couch on your property, which those are easy to do. You can remove the snow, you can cut your grass, you can move the couch off of your front porch, you can move the car out. But in this case here, if a property owner has a dead tree on their property, they would have to contract with someone else to have it cut down or trimmed in most cases. And that is an additional expense here that, you know, if they don't comply with it in a certain amount of time. And so, I'm just a little bit concerned about the difficulty that we may be putting on homeowners, hardships, because not everyone is able to comply financially. And I just want us to be concerned about that going forward as we set these code enforcement rules and regulations, that not everybody is able to comply financially. And I just want us to be concerned about that going forward here. This particular one really concerned me with the fact that in order for them to be able to be in compliance, they would have to go out and hire someone to either trim that tree or to have it cut down. And not everybody can afford that additional expense. And if they don't comply with it, then they have $500 in fees or in assessment. And I understand too that the code enforcement people are willing to work with them, you know, to help them along the way here. And then also, there is an appeal process. But again, how much hardship are we creating for our homeowners, assuming that everybody have the ability, financial ability to pay, when that is not the case? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I would like to make note also that if a property has a dead tree, one or two, on their property, as I have had in my ward, those people will lose their household insurance because of that, because they don't want the liability of a tree falling on that structure. So, as a responsible owner, it would be to their best benefit to be notified possibly if they don't realize they have a diseased, dead tree on their property before they lose their homeowner's insurance. Because then they will have to take action before they can get any insurance to cover that structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Mr. President.
I believe Mr. McLean was first.
And you know, and I, Mrs. Miles, I tell you, I thought the same thing whenever I was here for that meeting. And, you know, it is a burden on some people, but it's also a liability issue that they have for their neighbors and for themselves. I mean, you have a dead tree on your property that could fall into your house, that could I mean, you have a dead tree on your property that could fall into your house, that could do damage not only to, you know, you, your family members, do damage to your house or to your neighbors. And that is an issue not only of liability, but as of an insurance agent, because if we go out and look at a house and it has a tree that's dead next to that house, we will not insure it. So it gets back to the point of where does it lie? Who's responsible? If that tree fell in the neighbor's yard, who's going to clean it up? Who's going to take care of it? So it is an issue, and I really did not like the idea coming forward. I did not like that what happens if we've already gave them the notice and they didn't have the funds to take it down, we fined them, they don't have the money to pay the fine. What are they going to do, to come out and give them another one? Because that's the way it's set up? I don't like that part of it, I don't. But at least it gives us one little bit of an avenue to protect and give us a better neighborhood, and that's the only reason that I'm going to vote yes for this. I, again, did not like the way it was set up, because I don't see any teeth in how to enforce. All it is going to be is a penalty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, I was going to say a couple things about enforcement. Okay, why, Dan, you say it's not, no teeth in there for enforcement. That's the big, that is the biggest piece there, enforcement. Also, we should have had someone put together there, one who cut trees down. Could we do a bid on the tree for the city and this guy be responsible cutting the tree down, you know, at a certain price? Because the price don't run up. And I understand what you're saying, Sam, about some of the tree things. I'm telling that right now, because we got a lot of folks getting insured, just come out and look at it, see your tree falling, to cancel the insurance out. And I'm thinking they just not the reason for the trees because the area. That's me now. And I'm going to keep saying that until I get through the insurance commerce and find out why are they doing this, cancel all these folks out in the south in Lima, okay? When I see other houses not paying, cancel it out. But we do need something there, more or less than teeth in there, to show these folks. Because a lot of folks are going to be like, wow, I got to pay for this tree? Who will come out and inspect the tree? Do we got inspector come out? Come out and look at the tree and make sure that tree is not in bad shape, in good shape? This can run, this can run, this can run a lot of folks lose their homes, you know, behind this, you know, you know, or on their taxes, going to continue running their taxes up. So these are some of the things we got, we need to look at, and I agree with Ms. Miles 150% on that, you know, because this is going to hurt a person who are already in property level now, making close to fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year, want to say, this is my home, I don't want to live in apartment, I don't want no metropolitan housing, I want to have a home just like me and you, you know? So that's the way we got to look at it. And I think we should just look at it again and try to figure something out that can make it suitable for everybody, you know? You know, and I know people out on that side of town make good money, excellent money, some don't, but they make over more than what people out here in my area. So I just want to put that out there, because that's what we tolling it from, not from the south in Lima, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. McLean?
Just to make sure that we understand.
I understand.
We're not on any neighborhood, it doesn't matter where you live in Lima. It does not matter. That isn't the point. The point is that if it becomes a hardship for the person and they don't cut it down, we have no avenue except to go back out and to give them another fine. And that's the part I don't like about this. Because at this point, there is no other avenue. We're not going to be in the code enforcement issue with taking down trees. That was clearly in the meeting, it was something that was brought up, and we're clearly not in that business. Not like picking up leaves or picking up branches. It's not, we're in that, we're not in that business. We're not in the business to board up houses, and that's one of the problems we're into right now. So that's an extra expense and an extra deal for code enforcement to go out and determine that tree is dead. What happens if it's only insect-infested? I mean, who gives us the final approval on that? It's a judgment by someone that's not a tree expert. So I had issues all along, but at the same point, if you go around and you think about all the diseases, trees that we have, we of the city took a ton of them down in the parks, a ton of them, because they were dead and diseased. What happened if someone walked by there and a tree fell on them? The city would be liable. That's why that they do these things, and it is something that needs to happen. How do we fix that part of it, I think is another day and another discussion.
Let's get together.
Mr. President. Mr. Lowe?
I want to give a story here. When I first came on at council, I called the city with concern of a tree that was on Jackson Street. And from the sidewalk to the street, it was considered city. And the homeowner says, yes, I take care of the yards, took care of my sidewalk, took care of trimming, but I believe this tree is dead. And me and one of the department heads went rounds on this one particular tree. Well, a year later, well, let me back up. It's still producing leaves, the leaves were green as all get out. The guy kept saying, the tree is dead in the middle. I know it's dead, I can see it, look at this part, look at that part. And he kept talking about it. Every time we'd get a storm, limbs would break, okay, tore his house up, tore his house up twice, tore his car up once. They still came out and said there was nothing wrong with the tree. Then when the limb about took the corner of his house off, then they determined it dead. Who's going to take care of those trees? It's the city property. I think we need to watch what we're going to put in motion, because you're going to get a whole lot of trees, or the city's going to end up having to cut a lot of dead trees out. And it was mentioned that there was trees that was cut out in the park, there was a lot of trees cut out on Fro Park. Lincoln Park, we just had a huge tree. And praise God, no kids was out there. But that tree fell, and looking at that tree, the branches was as green as all our day. The tree was dead in the middle, and you would have never known it. Who judges that? I'm also in agreements with Councilman Glenn and Ms. Miles. A lot of individuals don't know if there's a tree hanging from your neighbor's yard and those limbs are on your property. I had to deal with that on summit, and I had to call my own personnel and trim those branches that was from that tree hanging over my property. But the tree was dead. And I knew without a doubt that that lady did not have the money to get that tree down. Now, if we can't determine, this was three years ago, if we couldn't determine a tree on Jackson Street, how do we have time to run around and determine dead trees in individuals' yards? And until we take care of what's dead on the street, I don't think we should do any of this, because the city has a lot of bad trees in there right away. And we can't throw stones, and we haven't taken care of our own business. So I would just, I hope that some of the other counselors. I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Ordinance 261-15 has been passed on its first reading by six-to-two vote. Next is miscellaneous business, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I know that Christmas time is joyous for my family and joyous for a lot of people. But I just want to remind all of us that might be a little more fortunate to keep in mind that sometimes Christmas is hard for people. This past week, I lost a very good friend to suicide. And I just want to have people think about others during this time that are lonely and don't have somebody maybe to be with, and just kind of, you know, send their prayers out for people that are in that situation. The only other thing I have is kind of what I'm saying now, I just want to remind people be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it is that time of year where we have a Christmas coming up, and there are people that are less fortunate than we are. All I ask you to do is, this is the time of year to give, not think about yourself. If you don't have money, give time. Volunteer. Spend a few minutes with your church, with your neighborhood association. Ring the bell. Go to Salvation Army. They'd be happy to have you work a couple hours. You know, it's not a better feeling in your whole life is when you go out there and you ring that bell and you just ask people to donate their change or whatever dollars they have in their pocket, and you get the thank yous from them. It's probably the best feeling of your life of giving, and that's what it's here for. This is the time of year. So I just wish everybody would get that feeling, be nice to your neighbors, be nice to your friends, be nice to everyone, and try to give as you can. If you can't give monetarily, give your time. There's a lot of people out there that just love to have your time. I also want to give a quick thanks to the utility department. I had a water leak in front of my office, and this leak was gushing. And they came out, fixed it, thought we had it all done. Couple hours later, we had a massive water break. Come back out, fixed it, you can't even tell they were there. They did a very, very good job. Just thank you, people that told Michael Reddy. But, you know, it's amazing how much and how fast that they work. And they were held up by the people that come out and mark the utilities. They had to wait for them. So, you know, we have a very good crews. The S-word is going to be coming around pretty soon, and we're going to see that Saul Allen does a good job when that's, they take care of your streets. But if you do have issues, let your counselors know. We need to know too. We need to know so that we can let them know to get your areas. Are they perfect? No. There are some areas that get, we seem like we're the last ones. Don't we feel that way sometimes, John, that we get the last ones to be clean?
Oh, yours get cleaned?
So, you know, we're way out, but, you know, it's nice that we let them know, let them know when they do a good job also. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Mr. President. The last council meeting, I made a statement about Llama City Schools' hiring practices. I later found out that I was not told all the truth, so I'd like you to understand what I said. Also, I would like for any individual, property owners, especially if you're adjacent to a property that is currently being cut by the city, and you're the one cutting it, I want you to please contact me. I've had two individuals just this week alone say, I feel that this should be put on notice. There's a lot of individuals that live next door to properties that have been taking care of it, whether it be littered, debris, grass earlier when it was growing. Please get ahold of me. You can contact me through the city email or my number that is posted on the website. Black Lace Hair Salon at 768 North Main will be a constant voter registration spot. So if you are not registered as a voter and you would like to become registered, at any given time, you can come to Black Lace Hair Salon, and we'll make sure that we'll get you registered and get the paperwork filled out the right way. Officer Donald, chief, I had a personal situation this week. His professionalism was remarkable. Time that we sat and talked, spoke about the situation, and his compassion for what was going on exceeded any expectations that I ever thought about Officer Donald. Good man, we sat down and talked, kind of got personal with him, and it felt good to see that we was of like mind, only for a moment. There's some good officers. There are some good officers. We often see things in the news that puts a label on officers and some of their reactions. Just like with every job, you got good worker and you got bad workers. But I can't say without a shadow of doubt, chief, and I hope this gets back to him. I appreciate him, Officer Donald. One of the other things that I want to speak on is, again, this has kind of been a pedophile, and it's the safety of this building. Administration has taken some measures to help out. I think we need some more. I looked on the television this past week, and that could have been us. It could be us right now. And individuals went to work that day to actually have an employment party, and some left their families thinking they was going home that night. I know we're in positions where sometimes individuals don't agree with what we say or do, or some of the ordinances and communications that we pass, and they're upset, or they got fined, or we even might get an individual that might get upset if this tree thing goes through. You never know what sets a person off, okay? I want to see more. I'd really like to see more. I want to publicly say, I think we still need that metal detector at their front door. I think we still need an officer at that front door. I did bring a proposal once before. I hope we can look at that again. We need safety in this building. And regardless to how any of us feel about any of our administration, good or bad, they are our leaders, and they deserve to be protected as well as our city workers within this building. So by all means necessary, this won't be the first or the last time you hear me say this, but I'm going to push, and I'm going to scream from here to California, but we need, we need more. We need more in this building. These individuals went to work, and they probably went in with the idea that it hasn't happened here, or it would never happen here. And we could keep putting off things. I got a letter, I have to attend the State Senate Wednesday, and they've already told me what you can and cannot have on your person, because they went to higher measures also. I think actually that the day after, I seen it on the news, and I said, wow. So if they're taking precautions, we need to also do it. We have some, but we don't have what we could have. And I think we need to do whatever we can to make sure that happens as a council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin? Nothing this evening. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to call a public works meeting for next Monday, December 14th at 5:30. Two items on the agenda. The first will be the continued discussion of design review process and of the guidelines. The second portion of the meeting will be the more obligation that's been in committee for the past months. We're ready to convene again on that issue to make a decision. The other issue I'd like to mention tonight is, today is 74th anniversary of the attack of Pearl Harbor. We're losing that generation of men and women that were there that day and subsequent us getting into World War II. Let us never forget December 7th, 1941. And if you see someone, you know, we, at Veterans Day, you know, we reach out and say thank you and provide lunches, breakfasts to veterans as we should, but on this day as well. We need to reach out to those men and women that were either there at the time or subsequent went into the service because of it. It was a tragedy, I think, we have all been touched by. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes. Say hi to my dad, he watching me right now, so you got to be listening, Dad, now. It's not going to take that long. But first of all, I want to thank everyone who helped out this past weekend on helping out with Christmas trees. Me and my wife did, we surprised folks that we heard about they need Christmas trees, or someone gave us a call, and we surprised them with Christmas trees. And we didn't, I didn't do a good decoration though, but I did the best I can. But we hit about ten houses and made sure everyone, them folks had a Christmas tree, and some of the kids were so happy. And a young lady, I said that they've been pushing, they've never had a real tree, and that made me feel so good. And that's when my wife had to take the checkbook from me during the Christmas time, that I would just like to give away, and she had to remind me, you retired, you cannot keep doing this. So we happy about that. Also, what we're going to be doing is, Mr. Foster, who was the deputy warden at Allen Correctional, his daughter came up with a nice project from St. Girards, and she just started putting bags of different things in for people who are on the streets. And that's so nice with little Danielle, I call little Danielle, she put that together, and this is the project she want to do. So her and her mom do is drive around at night and hand them out to people, the guys that stand in the cold, I mean, you got food in there, little canes of food, shampoo, different little things for them guys to have, the ones who refused to go into the shelter and the ones who wanted to stay out. But they, she's, they handed out to them. So I appreciate her so much for that, and we're going to try to work on doing that on weekends, I'm so happy about that too. Also, we got, we was on my way in, we just found out that the Miss Ball Center received $2,500 from Walmarts. Vicky Roll ran there and got that to help with the toys. And now, these are the kids that in between is not eligible for the toys they had to give out. So she had 500 kids sign up right now, and more still going. So we're going to continue working very hard to make sure every kid get a top toy. It's like Sam, Sam and Todd was talking about, this is the season, guys. You know, a lot of folks around here being without, and we don't want nobody to be without. You know, let's try to help somebody out, help that neighbor out, if you don't know what's going through his mind right now. A lot of things going on, a lot of things going on in the world right now, you know? And let's keep them folks in prayer too, in California. You know, there's a lot of things going on, so we got to stay strong and look out for one another in our city to make sure we are safe. Make sure all the things that Jesse say, we got to make sure we are safe here, you know? you know? All that, that's very bad. And Todd says something about the police department, and Chief Martin, they are, and I got to give it to them, they are proven in the right direction that the peoples in Lima and the taxpayer want to see. They want to see that. And you got a lot of officers coming out now, talking, and what's that COP officer you guys got? Fantastic guy, getting around a lot and doing a great job, and I want them to keep that work up. Let's keep motivating them, guys. You see them out there, let's go out and shake their hands and keep up your good work, guys. When I see them, that's what I want to tell them, because we need that, because there's a lot of pressure on the police department, a lot of pressure on everyone right now, you know? Things going on, and you got to see what's going on TV, so we just got to keep it moving anyway. Also, we had a reminder, real quick, the cold drive, cold drive went real good. We thanked Chief and Chris Jackson and Robert Hatchard, they did a great job on that. I got, I got kind of sick because I burnt out from passing out trees that night in that cold weather, but they did a good job on that, and we still have some cold stuff over, and I'm be handing out like 10 of them tomorrow, I know some parents that call, and I'll bring them over to you guys. And, and it's so great. But I'm, I'm, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I know I'll be here next Monday, but my dad is having a very, very important surgery, and just keep him in prayer. That guy's a fighter, and he going to be with us for Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn, Mrs. Miles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo some of the things that some other people already said about this holiday season here and Christmas. You know, sometimes this time of year gets to be very, very stressful for a lot of people, and this time of year was not meant to be a stressful, mind-boggling, hustle-bustle type of the year. So I, I would just want to encourage everybody who's here, everybody who's listening, to take time and enjoy this season.
Yes, sir.
It, it is a season of, of joy, of peace, of laughter, spending time with family. We have made it something that it was not meant to be here, with the hustle and bustle of shopping and decorating, which is, which are all good things here, but let's just keep them in perspective, you know? A lot of people, like, have been mentioning, this time of year is kind of hard for some people. A lot of people who are maybe who have lost loved ones this time last year or, and so forth here, they're having a difficult time. So I would encourage you to reach out to those type people, you know, that maybe, maybe spending the holidays by themselves, maybe grieving over a loved one, to take time out of your busy schedule, to spend some time with them and give them encouragement. And I'd just like to give everybody else encouragement and hope too. There is so much going on in this world. You know, we got the ISIS, we got the terrorism, we got mass shootings, we got so much going on in this world, and sometimes we can just lose perspective
That's right.
...of life, of, of the things that we have, the people that are in our life, and, and we, and we have a feeling of hopelessness, but I, I want to speak hope into everybody's life, that there is hope, and that we can enjoy ourselves and not, not be so consumed with what's on television and what we see and what we hear, but just truly take time to enjoy what you have, enjoy your blessings, enjoy your loved ones, and, and just not worry about all those things that can totally consume you. And so another thing we talked about giving, I, the city has a Toys for Tots container here, and it's here until December the 10th, and there's Toys for Tots containers all over the city here. And it, and we have one back in the back room, back there in the, in the, what's it called, snack room, break room?
Break room.
So for those of you who may not have, have given to Toys for Tots, you still have an opportunity until December the 10th, I believe, to bring a toy and, and put it in the container for a loved one. I am not ashamed to say that when I was young, that's how I got my toys, I found my toys. And so every time I have a chance, I support, I support anything with Salvation Army, with Toys for Tots, any organization that is seeking to give to the needy, those who cannot afford a toy. So I would encourage you, find a place where have a Tots container, they're all over the way. I saw one at the YMCA, I saw one here. Go out and buy a $10 toy and put it in there. You will bring a joy to a, a kid's life that he may not have if it wasn't for, for that gift of giving. So let's, let's give, and let's not worry about ourselves, because I, I would say that most of us have, but there are a lot of people who have not. Lastly, I'd like to say the Westgate Neighborhood Association, they're having a Christmas party on December the 20th. There would be no meeting this year, it would just be sitting around and just eating and enjoying the fellowship here. We, December the 20th, 6:00 PM, at the Chamberlain-Huffrey Cable Road location, and everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. I'm going to echo the sentiment too, with a little bit of a different twist. There are 19 days until the day after Christmas, and I guess I would just challenge everyone to think about what you can do between now and then that will have an impact on the 26th and the 27th and the 28th, and throughout the following year for Christmas. Sometimes it is, as Mrs. Miles said, just a few minutes of your time that is the most valuable gift, a hug to somebody who is missing somebody or is having a rough time. Sometimes those are the biggest gifts and the most valued gifts.
You are, yeah.
And I would just challenge everyone, including myself, to make the most of the next 19 days. One of the other items I want to mention, I guess, just for the record. Mr. Low, I appreciate you rescinding your comments from the last meeting, but I want to clarify and get it into the minutes, that in fact, the situation that you were talking about with somebody not getting hired at the city schools, was in fact offered a job on two different occasions and declined the position. And I think that it's, it's, it's one of the things that we as council members have to be careful of, we're given information, we can assume and presume that it is truthful, and in some cases, we find out that there is parts of it that have been left out. But when those things are repeated and can cast dispersions on another organization, I think it's important to get the clarification into the record also, in this case, that a person who allegedly wasn't hired was in fact offered a job twice and declined. So that's all I have this evening. Mr. Tevin?
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn until 7:00 PM on December 21st in these chambers.
Second?
Motion, the second, is that Lima City Council will adjourn until 7:00 PM on December 21st in these chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.